Hello, everybody, and welcome to the November workshop meeting of the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. I am serving in place of your Board President Jim Lee, who had a prior commitment this evening. I believe Commissioner Wilson is on his way directly from an airport. And Commissioner Cobb will be here in short order, but we didn't want to hold anybody up, so we wanted to get started. How many Zoom attendees do we have? Craig? Nine Zoom attendees. Thank you all for being here. I want to acknowledge all of you for being here. And before we get s- oh, I just do want to acknowledge also that Andy Frameth is here in place of Jim Garrity, who should also be joining us somewhere in the middle of this meeting, so don't be annoyed or disturbed by that. We have here Bob Jordan, who is here instead of Tim Woodrow, our Township Engineer. So just want to acknowledge both of you here today. I'd also like to acknowledge this Veterans Day and send blessings to all of our service members and your families and those who've served and continue to serve today. We're grateful for your sacrifice. There he is, straight from the airport. Before we begin with the Engineers' Report as we usually do, I just want to take a quick poll of the audience members here today about what topics I could tackle after Engineering Report. Shout them out.
I hear Traymore Avenue, Moore Grand.
Traymore four is Willow Grove. And EAC topic. Anything else? I got Willow Grove, got Traymore, got EAC. Those three things. All right, so for those who have not been here before, we will typically begin with our Engineers' Report. Then we will tackle the rest of those public comment matters and then promptly proceed through our agenda. And so, thank you, Bob. Welcome.
Good evening. Again, I'm going to ask two points of discussion for the board's consideration today. One is the all-way stop sign at the intersection of the long lane and the Hillcrest Road. But we don't know if the signs were any striking during the time of the meeting, whether they're amending. The last thing is the Hillcrest Pond, similar like authorization received on advertising where the direction of the pond was similar to the meeting from the other meeting farm last year. This is going to meet the contractor on Wednesday, and it'll find its scope and help bring down costs to the community to make that happen. And there's going to be one or two things that might all be addressed.
All right, the Hosling matter. Beth, do you have any concerns since I know that's in your area?
Yeah, just to clarify for folks that the decision-making process around that stop sign was the result of the traffic study done by the company who's developing the space. So that wasn't, that's where that decision comes. People have asked if that was a board decision. So just to clarify that that came out of the results of the traffic study.
Anyone else?
Do you, I'm sorry, do you want to just clarify Tommy around that?
Yeah, so the stop signs are already in. They're currently covered because they're unenforceable. We have VMS signs, which are variable message board signs that are announcing that a stop intersection will be coming up in the near future. As soon as this board blesses the stop signs on Wednesday, we'll uncover them. I have a red blinking light installed on top of them to call attention to them, and it'll be enforceable. We'll probably start first few weeks with a warning system, but yeah, immediately.
Thank you.
Do we have, I have a question. Do we have a place for the trailings from the pond?
Yeah, we're going to take them to the Millie Shihole Road dump site.
Okay.
We can't, we'd love to be able to leave them on-site, but it's all floodplain down there.
Yeah.
And we can't put them in that area.
Okay.
So they're going to unfortunately have to get all the Millie Shihole Road site where they'll feed water, and then we'll spread them out.
Sure, sure, sure. And there's no thought of putting them tankered like we did last time?
So the only, the only thing I like to avoid doing with that is you have to get the sort of, get it tested.
Okay.
Because we're dealing with that brownfield site. I don't want to complicate the whole two process.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Okay, just a question.
Just so we can close out, is there anything else, Mike, on the Hillcrest Pond matter to share?
Ah, so you've got about $100,000 in ARPA funding that you had set aside for that project. We don't think that it's going to get 100% of the pond dredged. It's going to be about as much as we can get done for that. Craig reconciled some of our projected and already in-hand expenses that we use in the ARPA funds. And we probably have about another $12,000 that we could allocate towards that project, you know, which is better than nothing. And the friends of Hillcrest Pond, I met with them the other day, and they have a modest contribution, about the same amount, maybe as high as $15,000 or so. But they can contribute towards it, so if you're looking at.
Well, it certainly needs it.
Yeah.
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 And probably a good time to do it when it hasn't been raining for, you know, 45 days.
Well, the winter's always a good time.
Best adventure.
All right, that's all I have. Anyone else? Great. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Have a great night. I'm just going to take it down the list in order, plus what the public wants to hear about. So the first item is actually B on our agenda, and that's Traymore Avenue. And then we'll do Willow Grove, and then we'll do EAC. Traymore.
Ed, do you want to kick that off?
Sure. I met with a group of neighbors last, I don't know if that's the last week or not. And I had the opportunity to hear a lot of concerns about traffic congestion and parking, specifically at the intersection of Traymore and Willow Grove with regards to sporting activities, businesses along Willow Grove and the sporting fields. But also pedestrian traffic and concern about crossing the street. There were a lot of good ideas. One of them that was proposed was a one-way direction going, I guess that would be west on Traymore. But before we get into, you know, solutions, the first step would be a traffic study. And we've had traffic studies in the past. I know they've been done internally through our police department. And there was a question as to when they were done, how they were done, the efficacy of the testing and the results. And ultimately, I think the goal is to have an engineering study, an engineered traffic study. But this will be the first step toward it. And so I propose, and I'm here with some of the neighbors here to talk about congestion and the concern, but also getting started with the traffic study.
Before we discuss, are there any neighbors who would like to speak on this matter, unless Commissioner Moore has covered it all?
Please come to the mic and.
If you do, yes, please come to the mic and be sure to state your name and your address.
Come on. Okay, hi, Tom. I was actually at the intersection of Traymore and Willow Grove. We met a couple other shop there as well. Mike Chilby moved, but the shop felt tense. He may be calling me here tonight because he and his other worker with this, there is any instance of beyond just the bus stops popping, like kids out. Also, because people crossing the street, not so much now, but the ones that have to come through the road. And age aren't as prominent as they were in summer. So it's just more of a safety issue. I've talked ahead about, I think, previously, Jeff Barstow was involved with the Safety Association. They had done a study to make Traymore one-way. And I think he said, I spoke to him recently, that it was just put on the four shelves. Anyway, that'd be a great idea because making a left turn onto Willow Grove Avenue, the cars back all the way down Traymore, when the fields get out, it's really just an issue of safety. I think that's what everybody's concerned with in there, or also parking is a big issue with that too. Because people come to Captain Andy's or they come to give in to the restaurant, and they end up turning around in the middle or backing up, turning around, and then going back out. So it's a constant congestion, I think, more specifically.
Thank you.
That's really fine.
So it sounds like an internal traffic study by our safety officer? And my only notation on that is, is this the best time considering those notations, and does it matter?
I think that prior to the study being done, we should all talk about when the areas in time concern are. And we, we want to make sure that the issues are observable so that, you know, when we do come up with a solution, that it gives the thought.
It sounds like there are different issues at different times of the day. And in fact, they're potentially a different issue at different times of the year as well. So you've got like the deliveries that are occurring during the business day, you know, from the food service trucks and those types of things servicing the businesses. You've got patrons to those businesses during the day, mostly Captain Andy's, I guess. But then you've got the dinner crowd that sounds like it comes later on that is an issue. And you've got the Uber Eats and the delivery drivers and those kind of people. Again, this is, Ed communicated this to me earlier. And then you've got the seasonal activities with the Little League, which happens, you know, springs to height through summer, that kind of thing, I guess, so. Yeah, yeah. So the soccer, though, is that mostly Saturday game times? Right, so the practice, though, that's done at 4:35 now? It starts at 4:30?
Bob, go ahead.
And the practices generate quite as much traffic as a game would?
Yeah, a little, a little bit of the basketball and tennis, so.
Go ahead.
On the ground, a little more. So in addition to that, I think, and I think the point was made is that the effects that happen at the corner really extend down the length of Traymore, on the corner of Havington. And we see some interesting driving. People do go down and they kind of make that U-turn. And it's kind of complicated by the fact that that's a two-way stop. And not everybody aware of it will go right through the stop on, and then exit another thing. So I think on your point, that it's a bit of a complicated study to do, that's still made different regulations to it. But if you want to take all of this, that you, Willow Grove all the way down to South Hampton, might be a better idea of the full effects of all these different activities coming in, what's still on the track part. Well, and the roads that we had actually stayed on, like you have really don't seem to.
Right, so is it to tackle the one-way proposition?
I think it's everything.
Okay, everything, great.
I'm Steve Cooper. I am at Hillcrest Road Avenue, corner of B1 Traymore. I get, I get what you mean, like at the summer games, soccer and the softball. Concerned about blocking driveways, parking on the corners, illegally parking every night. Standing tight out, and come back to the spot, they go off their gear, and they get worse months. So kind of those, that's what we've done.
Have we been reporting to the police as much as possible?
They call me, they go by, they leave. Thank you.
Can we make a notation on enforcement as well?
Yeah, that's going to be part of it. That's been mentioned.
That's addressing the waste day, the jumper is on. Years ago, we were told that when we had meetings, the police, that we were supposed to call 911. So there was everything about that. But we sort of got used to it. We're practicing it, but it's not an emergency. There is a law of the street of people falling across the. So, you know, I think that Ed was definitely up in 911, which we hated, but that's.
And for the numbers I control, you're examining a number that would matter. On the other side of the corner of Avenue 10 and 40. It seems to be some communication with this store, a clearly, a clearly river, a little over the road. Then they come out. They all pray more to Avenue 10, and instead of making a left to go to Flower Town and get out of Willow Grove and White. They go up. They all steal themselves into Avenue. When it was morning, he went across Avenue 10 to South Avenue and went around that thing. And, you know, they sort of have some responsibility, probably people have anything else. Unfortunately, the property fell in, it nearly is dead in my city. But it's going to be a big accident. I had one, the guy drove off, he almost took out my wall. And it was during, it was softball. I don't care about softball. Softball is a couple of minutes, it's many kids for me. I think we have, oh, even children, okay, even. People are lost already to park these spots, but I was four o'clock, please, I moved down four or five, please. My husband had somebody asking me, I would walk the course of the drive, please, is that real thing? So there's definitely a little more communication. The one-way street might work, but, you know, I'm an Indian person. I don't want them coming down my street. I'm sure they don't want to come down the hill, but. And the people who were out there probably don't want to do it, so I think it's, it's tough. It seems like we're trying to get every piece of grass out of this thing and cover the building. And they live in Philadelphia, softball. But these stocks have to figure out a way to get out of there. I think, I think it was Cheltenham Avenue in one neighborhood. Ladies and gentlemen, the morning, it's the first one. No, it's too far without the parking here. It could be seen to be two weeks last, and now they're pouring. I mean, yeah, we can't do it like that.
Thank you. Sounds like the internal traffic study will be our first step. All right. Any other?
Question? I, I just thought, I don't remember at the moment. At that intersection, Willow Grove and Traymore, is there a loading only? Or are they available spots that's not, it's not a loading?
There are four spots, and people would want to support them in the park, they'd be off the little way. When you get to where you're trying to come around, it's a tiny square, people, you can't see. They didn't plan into the back, so we've been waiting for a spot who's not going to still go up. Which, by the way, doesn't have enough parking.
So there's no identified space for a truck to make a, to make the delivery?
They are coming illegal time, it's basically a film shop. And it says, no stopping or standing, but it's illegal. And I haven't talked to them, Bill, but, you know, they.
It was a closet, it was a month, and they said, it was in the white box, it's dumb, it's awful.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're going to continue down Willow Grove and take 1103 Willow Grove Avenue as our next topic. D in your books, everybody? Hello, Mr. Coles.
Hello, you ready for me?
I'm ready for you.
My name's Joe Coles. I'm here on behalf of Jay Overpass, who is developing for the J34. And we're here this evening to talk to you about the particle property, just to try. Is the particle property going to corner of South Hampton and Midgrove that are currently owned and occupied by the park? Let me first say that we are not here with a land development application. We've made no land development application. And we anticipate that there will be a land development application, if we're fortunate enough to ever attempt one for quite a while. What we're here to discuss with you tonight is the possibility of rezoning just that corner particle. That 30,000 square foot, approximately 30,000 square foot, foreign parcel. What we're asking you to do is consider the possibility of extending the B1 Business District, that last step to the corner of South Hampton. Both sides of Willow Grove on that current lot are zone B1 Business, with the possibility, I think, perhaps Captain Andy's may be still B residential for. But both sides of Willow Grove on that, all the way from Queen and South Hampton down to Elm and Traymore are B1 Business. So we're asking you to take that last step and rezone the parcel that we're talking about this evening from the B residential to the B1 District, B1 Business District. Now, we wouldn't make the rezonation suggestion to you in a vacuum. So we did deliberate a concept plan, where we asked, and Craig would put that up, to show you what Mr. Overpass is considering for potential development in the area and use in the area. If we were to accomplish our goal of rezoning that piece from the B residential to the B1 Business. The piece we're talking about is the piece right there on the corner, where the firehouse currently exists. If that piece were rezoned from the current B residential to B1 District, this is the overall concept plan you might see for your overall properties, which are currently divided in parts.
And to clarify, there's, it's not presently being used as residential, of course. It's not presently being used as residential, of course, because the firehouse is there, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. It's not currently being used as residential, it's all lit by now.
Is this 711 here?
I'm sorry?
Is that the 711 on the left?
This is the 711 on the left, which would not be part of the project. This is where the dry cleaners are. This is where the firehouse, as we said. Back here, the large building, which is currently a dog training facility. And this parcel here, one large parcel, I think about an acre and a half, is a leg out of South Hampton. And that is the 30,000 square foot parcel we're talking about at the corner. There's one more parcel next to it of a pound, I believe, 20,000 square feet. And then the dry cleaner parcel is actually sitting on two pieces, one here and then one along the front. So they would, they would be five parcels that we're talking about. And what you see on the proposal are 14 attached singles in the rear, a mixed-use building up here on the corner with commercial on the first floor, and residential on floors two and three, and the relocated firehouse, rebate firehouse here at this location, with obviously tent to the bumper as much as possible, the residential in back. And the multi-use building, everything you see here right now would be permitted under your current ordinance, except for the building on the corner, which is the rezonation we're requesting. And the rezoning we're requesting would still require that the applicant proceed through a special exception process with your zoning hearing board in order to obtain a mixed-use building, even if the property were rezoned from the B residential to the B1 Business. And again, the only thing on the table this evening, the only thing we're asking you to take a look at is the rezonation. This is only a concept plan, again, about what you might see if the property will be zoned. And the really good news is we're not even really asking you to make any sort of decision this evening on the rezonation, or to take any position related to the rezonation. We're only asking for an opportunity to be heard. Because obviously, as you're probably well aware, under Pennsylvania law, you have no obligation to grant a hearing on a rezonation application. It's like waiting for Congressmen to ask them to lower your taxes. They could ignore it. So we're asking you to please give us an opportunity to be heard on this topic, and give us an opportunity to appear before you in a properly advertised and noticed public hearing, and lay out our entire case and tell you why we think it's a good idea, again, to take that piece of the corner on your map from B residential to B1 District. I have Mr. Overpass with me this evening, the chief's here, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have. And again, we're just asking you to authorize staff to take the steps necessary and schedule a hearing. We don't have a formal application for this, and most officers don't have a formal application for this. So I'm glad to write a letter, and I'm Mr. Taylor, making the same requests I'm making to you this evening. I was just asking you, again, receive it, give us a chance to be heard.
I guess I had two individuals I wanted to get feedback from, which is staff, and then I wanted to be assured that the firehouse was on board with this concept.
Okay, well, the firehouse is definitely on the rezonation.
I see it.
Can you elaborate on that further if you want?
And staff, do you have any notes or concerns?
No concerns. You know, from a pure planning perspective, it probably makes sense for that area on Willow Grove Avenue to be zoned consistently. I can't tell you the reason why that particular corner was zoned B residential. I think it's B1 Business all the way down until, in fact, you get to Flower Town. I think the church is the, right on the corner there, is the only other one that's zoned residentially, but it's used non-residentially.
Sure.
Very similar to the firehouse property. But that's what you have the public hearing for, and why you do all that, you get, everyone's paying on it.
I think it's fine, I mean, my position is that I think it's fine to have a public hearing on it and have the opportunity to be heard. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I just had a quick question for you, Mike. And this might be far off in the future, very far off, so it may not be applicable to this project, but when we entertain the purchase of the property next to the township building, we did it, again, with the thought, long-term planning, decade-plus. One, the R3 doesn't come up often, no, or something like that, but it was also hypothesized eventually having to consider combining the firehouses, maybe a central house more localized, and that might be a parcel or.
I mean, it's certainly not large enough as it is today.
And again, again, this is like, but is something like that so far off in your estimation?
I would think that it's pretty far off at this point. I might hope that it is. Certainly, the fire services would know better, and you have a meeting with them annually. Talk about those types of things.
But the, but the kind, I only bring it up because the conversation always comes up angrily about the strain of, you know, just free volunteer forces. And just with the consideration of building an entirely new house as part of this development project.
We have many avenues, we have many different avenues to go, and we get that.
Okay. Yeah.
Will be my lifetime.
Will be your lifetime.
Just for the benefit of the audience, chief said there's many avenues to go before we get to that point. He doesn't think it's going to be in his lifetime. Anyone else?
The only question I would have is the zoning change would only affect the, the green corner there? Wouldn't, wouldn't, it wouldn't extend into the existing residential block?
Correct.
I don't know what you mean by the green one.
Oh, well, no, the, the corner of South Hampton and Willow Grove Avenue, just right here.
Do you have the zoning?
The depth of the rezoning.
That's, that's correct. We was requesting a rezonation on anyone's property, but we did not have that ability to.
Okay.
That parcel a little.
Okay, yeah.
The parcel in South Hampton is not a part of the.
Okay.
Pete, yeah, see that, he went right there. That's the only parcel that we involve.
Okay.
Okay.
And just as in terms of the vision of that development, just the commercial businesses extend along South Hampton as well?
Well, I think the coordinated development of all these parcels together makes a lot of possibilities for minimizing the traffic down that bowling alley that's out there. In other words, if that 1.7-acre parcel developed solo on its own, you might be forced to make greater use of that leg out of South Hampton. If it's developed in conjunction with four other parcels, I think it's quite likely that we can minimize traffic out of South Hampton along that bowling alley, and maybe even be so fortunate as to leave it only for an emergency accident. Can I answer your question?
You know what he's referring to in terms of the bowling alley?
In the back?
Yeah, it's the driveway that services.
And I guess I was trying to just envision, I mean, you know, there's existing businesses along Willow Grove, I get that. It's, it's misdesign here.
Can we bring up the concept again, Craig? The concept plan again?
The buildings are bootlegs down, yeah. So are there businesses then?
That's, that's the only, the only commercial piece being proposed right now is the first floor of this mixed-use building.
So the first floor along South Hampton would also, no? Okay, that's what I was.
It's 5500, the concept, there have to be like a gym, like a condo, there's open, there's no commercial along, so.
Okay.
The commercial utilization is going to be one of the.
Jay, would you mind for the benefit, coming, come to the mic, thanks?
Consistent with the rest of the avenue.
Smaller though. So we, in order to be, in order in this concept plan to be by right, you know, no bearing request, there would only be there would only be small commercial units here and here. This piece is shown essentially covered parking in order to leave the parking environments, with parking under here, and it would be kind of a 5500 or a part of the, there would be an M and E down there, like a gym, maybe, or something for the beach, that would be, there would be nothing on this side of the road that would be something to be, that would be pressure.
And what kind of, what kind of, what kind of commercial tenant would you envision in those two small spaces?
I haven't gotten there yet. I haven't gotten there yet, it's pretty small, so they're, um, one of the concepts or concepts we're finding, uh, is a USDA, um, prep issue. So we're using, we're doing twelve years every day, it was supposed to prep the, um, the, like, the, the, the lack, and the, you know, the, the, the town. So, and one of the uses that I've been talking about, it's all dealing with, we have two two thousand square foot spot here, one four thousand. Well, they're not just going to be on the B one. And again, the limitations there are just to be able to need the parking environment, I think it'd be much more than that on, based on.
Would these, would these be for sale or rental units?
Back here's for sale.
Okay.
These would be rental.
Okay.
This is bi-right for utilization of the B residential lot that here. Um, we're working this to allow the townhomes, uh, at a density that makes sense on these parcels. So these are actually twins at B one. And from, you know, keeping in mind that the difficulty is one of the difficulties of this lot is the cell power in Frank here. I bet cell tower plantings are reasons I'm not going to let board with it, we can other than say we've lost all of our options to try to do so, but trying to figure out a way to redevelop these parcels when there's a cell power right here, presenting a unique challenge. This is, you know, a version of a bi-right point of, that we could use.
Is the cell power still active?
Yes.
Craig, can you drop that, um, bit of that slide a little?
How many carriers run it?
Uh, we did not know how many carriers, but we totally believe the technical. And there's cell, there's, and there are some towers, so we need a lot of them prepared.
By at least?
American towers, a forty-five hundred company, they have a ninety-han year lease back. Uh, was an agreement, but you know, fire department that was signed in nineteen seventy-eight. They pay no rent, and it's just a wish I had a deal. However, they don't have a reason for access, and they're not consistent with the ordinances around the static update. So our plan would be as part of this, when I develop the process, to use the lack of, and use that for access, whether it's to get them to statically improve it to the extent that we are able to. But we're looking at this now, and we're trying to talk to them about going over to another, for example, and they call it this, we don't need all of that, we, uh, I think that's on the way.
Mike, could you describe what the next step would be, assuming there's no, um, or that we're willing to accept, uh, they have this hearing?
So we, we don't do too many of these, um, so it's a, it's a bit of a, we probably look to Andy's guidance and, and Jim's guidance along and work with Joe on that. Um, but at the end of the day, if you choose, if you think it's a good idea, um, there's going to be a public hearing one way or another, because you're going to have to man your zoning map, um, which is going to call for a public hearing, um, to do so. And you probably refer to the planning commission, um, because it's a zoning ordinance, you have an obligation to do that. So there's a number of steps along the way.
Right, so a, as Joe said, um, he could submit a letter here requesting that an ordinance be prepared and that there be a hearing. Again, you don't have to grant the hearing, totally discretionary to the board, um, but if you did decide to advertise an ordinance, it would first go to your township planning commission for review. It would go to the county planning commission for review, and then ultimately in the newspaper for a hearing before you.
Why wouldn't it go to zoning director first?
Because you write the zoning ordinance. It's an ordinance map amendment.
Map amendment?
Yes.
We're going to be conforming with the map.
Yeah.
Once it's changed.
Once it's changed.
Well, he needed relief from your zoning hearing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, they, ma- maybe they need relief for the ultimate development.
This would represent spot zoning, wouldn't it?
No, because it is, uh, is consistent with immediately adjacent, with no spot.
Well, on one side it is, but generally across Southampton it's not.
Well, there always comes an annual visitor, always an annual visitor. So all, all we'd be doing is then larding the existing B one business along Willow Grove. So if there'd be no spot, spot would be an isolated island.
Another thing to consider here, what the in Fox over the last few years would achieve in this staff, including around ways to help them achieve their record, again, and more modernize. Fire department, this, uh, plan allows us to pave it in a way that fire department would go under enough if they're building to provide service in a sense that you would completely fill and move that in here before you start in this.
Oh, okay.
That's a unique component of the, of this, of this, if we looked into keeping them where they were, renovating them, that's significant. Undertaking and where they were going, the other one was a challenge. So, uh, you know, some version of this would allow for them to never miss a day of being able to provide service under the left.
Come on forward.
Um, we've got all the guys, we've got a house, but we, 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 we had many talks, we looked into many opportunities. How was through the, 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 yeah, but ultimately, uh, such a significant financial undertaking, um, you know, for the fire department, and he's, he tries to look at. There was one fraction of a particular one in front of the building that we all saw, it would be a good tip. We just couldn't actually make the owner of that parcel that is financially viable for the fire department. It's quite our best efforts, so we've looked at multiple opportunities and considerations, so probably clear for you if it's possible.
It sounds like, uh, um, from my view, it makes sense to have a district that ends with a street on either side of it, so I think that's compelling to me. Um, but there's still a lot of steps left, just for the benefit of the public, that this is just the beginning, there's going to be, uh, clearly, we'd have to grant a hearing after a letter, the planning commission, the county, a newspaper advertisement, and a hearing here uh, for this map amendment, and then they would also have to go through the planning, um, the land development process. Nonetheless, that will, that's a whole separate process, it may not end up looking exactly like this, right? Okay. I'm with this, anyone else have a problem?
Are we allowing any comments about this, or is this not a comment because it's just active for a segment?
Um, I, you know, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I'd say certainly if there's, if there's any...
But there'll be a public hearing where you can actually have testimony.
Right, this is public comment, uh, if you want to make a comment on it. Come, come forward and, and your name and your address, please.
I'm being a David, it's in a hundred and eighty-four avenue, and I'm wondering why we would put more business in to a community that is already wrapped the parking. Like, they, there were variances that we trusted were going to be appropriate, they are not. We don't have enough parking, there's too many businesses as it is. You're living the firehouse, the firehouse currently takes up maybe the front little corner of that humongous building. If you look, I did a, an overlay on the map, on the Google map, of this plan to actually see where things lie. And the seven eleven would be literally right next door to the firehouse, if you know the little teeny building that is right next to that, the seven dry cleaner, I don't even know what it is, it's a bomb, it's a bomb. Um, like, it's, it's a teeny little building, you're going to be a monstrous, three-day fire truck house to that little teeny property, and you think that's going to be enough parking? Plus businesses, plus a community? It's not going to be enough business, it's not going to be enough parking. Parking has to be a consideration. I mean, the irony is, I was here because I just wanted to hear what was, I have full faith in him and what he's trying to do to alleviate the problems that are in our community, and if you don't live there, you don't understand. It is all the time, all the time. We had to put an extra parking spot on my property because we never had parking. Like, it's ridiculous. This morning I woke up, you went on irony, this morning, I'm like, oh, I'm coming to meet you tonight, before I knew anything about this. I'm like, oh, you know, like, oh, maybe we can use that little plot of land that's adjacent to Veterans Park because they could use that for parking, they could gravel it over, and that would, that would solve a lot of problems. It would solve problems for the interestants, it would solve problems for the, for the day place that have a ridiculous number of weeks on a teeny little plot of land. But now I'm hearing we're going to be putting homes and the business and the firehouse and the fifty-five hundred other communities that's going to have tons of visitors and more cars. It's, it's not enough.
So the one thing I would say is that none of this is, there's still a...
Oh, I know, that's why I'm saying it, it's okay to be stuck, but I don't even know why we're considering making it a business.
Well, the...
Keep it a residence and keep it small. Windmore was a lovely, homey community when I moved in, in the year two thousand and one. And now it's becoming another Chestnutville, that is not what I signed up for. I guess that's it. Unless you have questions for me, I am happy to keep talking.
Well, thank you, I mean...
And you have to mention, here, across the street from that are the new, um, condos, condos, whatever they are, that, that are right, so we're gonna have, you're gonna have right on the street, a tall, humongous building, right across the street, the tall, humongous condos, which CS are not selling. You know, and we're going to be building more homes. We don't need more homes, we need open space, where's our open space committee? Thank you.
I would say I don't think that parking concerns are not heard, we think, I think we think about them a lot here, and, you know, seeing this, I actually see increased parking and potentially ability to offload some traffic, you know, off of Willow Grove in this way, and I do think that increase, um, or, or promoting the, the commercial district there just makes sense end to end from a planning perspective, that's my opinion. Go ahead, sir. No, it's all right, go ahead.
Uh, talk to me, then. I wrote this off the last line when we met the county itself. Over in Tredmore. It was worth an open space grant was given to this town with many, many years ago. And I, when I look at that map of town, hell, if you look at federal, I don't care what the town, oh, that side of town, it was I was raised in Old North, but I moved to Tredmore Avenue in nineteen forty-two, so, uh, let's give it a little turn, but I suspect that that might be where they're getting built. And I understand that the weeds in search is a little difficult to, to kind of date, it was, well, the land granted, who knows the spend? And that was a big reason because they had problems with it, so that bi-right building, or something. I brought it up today, and I'm working it up again today. I'm probably forgetting that I took fifty years with them.
So Tom, to be clear, there's no development on Veterans Park proposed in this scenario? It's the parcel of land that's owned by the fire company?
The Windmore Drive? Because that's bad, or the Windmore Drive from town, what we do? The Windmore Drive? The, look, I didn't, I just like to put in the line. I just think that has sales in the road. It's not in capital, it's too minimal. But, and I would hate to say it's built there, I would say, because it's on the federal landmark, we didn't build it. And then the house, we could come down.
Yeah, the, the property isn't owned by the town right now. It's owned by the fire company.
So that's part of the, of, okay, so, just somewhere on, in the, by old line, and it's actually for on the layer of old.
Can I just follow up, please, why does the firehouse need to move? So why does, what problem was the firehouse cooking up?
I mean, it's just from a technology standpoint, it's not up to, up to speed, and to update the building would be more costly than just moving to a new location.
Further along through the fire, so we're moving, we started this plan in twenty eighteen. Here, you're going to put my team, boil that pot, you gotta break through that property, boil the land, you need to hit it out. Um, but we, what we do is eventually, we have to sell it off, make a new fire. Fire has to go to A T As, fire has to be breached, fire has to be required from us, fire has to be boiler. So instead of taking this, we kind of put the money to that, if it isn't loaded, we would sell our property, we'd go to the fire. And that's where we're at, we're trying to keep up with the, not a very dear, you know, untrusted, no forage, is what people think of that? Will be four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, will be four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, we can, we can store it for, for a hundred, we can open it up to different factors we want to worry, and just the moment we have. That's good.
Yeah, and just to clarify again, what, a good portion of this can be done, uh, because it is already, um, you were saying earlier, some of this is already bi-right.
What, everything you see here could be built today, except for the multi-use building on the corner, which would require a rezon, or would require a variance, but we're requesting a rezon because it makes good planning sense, this proposal or some other proposal. But everything you see here today could be built, uh, committed for the providing you with a land development process, except for the corner piece. And I would just remind you, the corner piece is currently not residential, and has a brand of the right to be something other than residential. And then all those properties you're going to develop in some form over the course of the next point of years, and it's our job to show you why our form makes sense than some other form, or just leaving it to chance. Again, you have the great benefits of coordinated development here, and then all five parcels would be looked at together. One of the great benefits to that being, Craig, can we bring up the, uh, concept plan again? What I started to say before, they, I'm going to work. Can you just drop a little bit for me, Craig? About that, that, that would go lead out to Southampton, the one we're talking about earlier. This, this residential property here is straddled by the one point seven acre parcel back here, which is actually a flagline, the mast of which extends out to south. If these properties are all developed together, as is being proposed, there are great possibilities for minimizing any potential use of that leg out of Southampton. So again, everything you see here is permit, is permitted today, except for the corner, and that's what we're asking for the rezon for. The property would develop in some way under any circumstance, but it's our job, particularly when we're asking you, it's something you're not obligated to do, to sell you on it, and show you why the proposal we're putting forth makes more sense than other proposals, or just leaving things to chance, and why there's great benefits in developing these properties together as, as a total development scheme, rather than buy set or possible.
And this may be premature, but based on the fact that you're not asking for any additional variances on the development of other properties, do you do bare minimum, uh, parking spaces for development, or do you put cushion?
Well, there's always, there's always a pinch with the surface coverage, and, and nobody wants to build more parking than is necessary. But we're certainly going to conform with your ordinance, and we're going, we're going to have to see how, how the development stage can work out, we move through. If there's circulation issues, uh, we're going to have to show you what circulation makes sense, we're going to show you what kind of parking makes sense, and we're going to have to make sure that we handle all slow work and stuff.
And how the conversation's been with the, uh, property owner that would be wrapped there, that's already horseshooting?
We have, uh, we have, uh, gathered his contact information, and certainly going to be speaking in any fully out of public hearing. Okay?
Again, I think this is the beginning of a process that, uh, sounds like one avenue that makes sense to me. If someone else has any contributions, let's hear them now, otherwise I'm okay to move forward with the, allowing for the process to proceed.
Okay, well, I should name my letter.
What for your letter?
Fifty percent that there's some consent, consent that's been granted here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cheers, John.
Uh, there was one more topic I had from pulling the audience, and that was an EAC topic. Would you like to tackle that now? Or would you like to wait? Uh, I'm sure that's a letter N on your, in your book.
I live in Fredburg, I live at one hundred and seventy out there in Flower Town, and I need to speak on the, of the environmental license. Uh, so, uh, what is, oh, and this is the, the more grants and over, I mean, with sense of municipal opportunities and reference, or referencing, and of these different ways, these are grants being given, that's something that needs to be environmental, but okay, to me, it's compelling. So this opportunity just, uh, fell into our lap. So this opportunity just, uh, fell into our lap, I think, from Monday. Diane Herring from Practical Energy Association. She's our energy editor. She's worked with us since 2012. Um, Diane Herring, I think, Commissioner Mayne, uh, uh, about the book. Raising this grant, this, we have to, getting $50,000 grant from this state for up to use, to increase the energy efficiency of our municipal building. You know, and we've already done a lot of that. I guess, so your leadership is down. And there is a lot more to that, we do not forget. So, so I'm here to get that, uh, using help with kids and training on health care. Uh, sit us up the grant that, um, the Department of Environmental Protection, he's first to nail to, I think, the old division they've been through. So it was first closed in October. And, and people didn't apply for money. Really didn't apply for the money. So there's a lot of money spending. You know, they extended it then, like, until December sixth, which is why we need to jump in and accomplish. Uh, so Diane is PES Practical Energy Association, is proposing that they would develop the application for us. Uh, since they did, they've earned the $500 that we got. And, uh, again, they need to jump on that properly. So the instruction I gave for you all to treat that, I think, is a revelation that, uh, and Diane said, so much today. That's up, probably in the packet.
It's in your packet. Uh, it's in your folders tonight.
That's a pretty long one here. Mike does lots of, as well, I think. Oh, so the issue, the beginning seems to be a great idea. It's a, it's a, it's a, but most, well, I just, I think they ever did that. They didn't propose to go before, has been here, uh, and he just talked to you, we're telling.
Can I fairly summarize that we were, uh, recently discussing, uh, trying to fund more audits and just be on top of this a little bit more, um, proactively and that we're talking about a $500 investment for the possibility of up to $50,000 return? Brendan, do you have anything else to add from EAC?
No, just, you know, I think we were already looking for ways to do more on this front. And, you know, this opportunity to, to secure this money to really make that, make it a lot more possible in the near term and get us going.
Mike Taylor, do you have an issue with attempting to get $50,000 for $500?
No, not at all. Unless they're going to write the grant.
Oh, right. Of course. Of course.
But in, in your packet tonight or in your folder tonight, there's also a proposal from PES for the scope of work would be included in not only the grant writing, but also the, um, project it funded, what they would take on.
And I talked to Diane, I talked to Diane, well, right there. Uh, who only projected I think, and this doesn't, this has been absolutely revolutionary thing. Uh, in the scope for, uh, the first bullet, just due to, um, benchmarking on the two buildings they're selling and both library. Uh, either PES, we do that, or we include, we include, we have been benchmarked, any of their buildings from twenty eight and that sort of originally their life, the, the building, so that can go in the application, but that is my opinion.
All right. Any, uh, anyone opposed to doing this? Great. Anything that you need from us, Mike, to make this happen?
Yeah, just Wednesday, you're going to have on your agenda resolution to authorize the application and, uh, that'd be it.
All right. Well.
Could you just have one question? Is the $50,000, Joy, just for soft cost or are there hard costs in that $50,000?
No, if you cover the hard costs, for example, uh, when PES meets with our ASAP contact and we find out there's a problem with the equipment, that the $50,000 is covered.
But we can't, we can't buy the, the, uh, equipment fix out of the $50,000?
I think you can.
Oh, you can? Okay. Let's see you better.
Right.
Okay.
So if there's a couple of sensors that are off or.
Okay.
That they recommend, uh, if they want the system controls, uh, company to revisit the algorithms that they're using for when the system comes on and off and at what temperature they can rewrite that code and.
Okay.
Have that done.
That case of, well.
All right. Thank you. Seems like no issue at this point.
You watch us.
If, if you would like to participate in the conversation, you're welcome. You're always welcome. Thank you, Joy.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Uh, if there's.
Sure. Can I ask you a quick question, lawyer? And this is very off topic. Um, has the EAS, EAC ever looked at, uh, organic matter, um, recycling?
Like composting? What do you mean?
You know, so like leftover foods, uh, you know, basically anything we might normally throw out in the trash somewhere else, but.
Absolutely. The composting, um, uh, well, lots of compost files in our back door, they do, but there's also an emerging difference in the area for, um, first side composting and that. And, um, there are private offerings for this already, um, and we've been, we've worked on that, we've, it's way off it for anybody who likes. And there are a couple of municipalities in the area who have composting centers themselves. We know, and they, we have, uh, don't have. It's water. So that's, I think, the state thing right now. We do have some, it's, it's, it's unfortunate.
Well, I, I just, I saw a very compelling, it was a very compelling, uh, segment on, I think it was in Japan, does a lot of organic material recycling so that it doesn't end up in landfills where it can't break down. It's under plastic and other stuff. And so, um, it actually ends up being a significant contributor, um, to other, other issues. Um, and so if we can separate that from, you know, kind of the waste stream, there's a lot of very, so I just wondered if it's feasible in a chain. I wondered if you ever looked at it.
Yeah, we have. And let people know. I mean, there is a community of, of, you know, a lot of people, they formally, uh, of, 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 we, we, uh, we, it's, it's something that, I, we, 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 we've been set up on a, um, situation. So I don't think there's anything, you know, we don't have. If you want to fill a compost, I don't, without, without, I don't, it's wonderful. I've got all my trash in there. My neighbors are all, all my food is. It's on a factory line with my neighbor, Tim Shepherd, who's been all constantly, you know. Uh, and, um, it's one thing, but it's just beautiful for us, which I just put it on my desk.
You know, that reminds me, I think in the manager's report, there is a discussion about doing a solar panel, um, present, educational presentation, and maybe it'd be beneficial to wrap that into o- other topics about sustainability for our residents if it hasn't already been planned.
I think that you can get a consulting presentation. Um, I, I was not, I didn't know if we were trying anything, and I think we did one. So we can, um, we can, um, thank you. Uh, we can, um.
Consider that for this, maybe I'll, I wrote here, sustainability summit, question mark?
Absolutely.
All right.
And, um, that, um, this is in my brain, I have a lot of people. Um, my, we see, my, and I request, um, from, um, a solar installer, Joe Quill, who, um, owns a site, solar, Joe has been, great guy, he's a fellow of Ron, so I'm kind of, he's very personal.
Questions.
And Joe wanted to give a presentation, briefly, educate.
See you again.
Uh, about the, how to build a, I don't know if anybody knows solar on their roof. I've got, I have solar, I'm going to, I, oh man, there's a lot that, um, you know, I don't know before you walk in that, that room.
Like, yeah, I'm not sure we're gonna put on the same page for the holiday is about thought, right? So I recommend to think of the top of the US lot here has a whole, one whole theory to clean energy that on. For the public, seeing they had to do it in that the law court, they've got the both six, so that's gonna happen. They can just don't want to be on you. And we'll put that on our P H C table. And then we can consider doing that, you understand, completely. Yes, we will. You wanted to do it, just start up and you're like, it doesn't pay, you know, it's a byword, and this kid worked in an awful lot, but it all gives me fair retards.
Well, good luck and thank you. Sounds like no issue for Wednesday and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, governor. We go at some sort of maybe workshops for twenty twenty five.
Perhaps. Thank you. Before, well, welcome. We'll make a solicitor switch here in a moment. Before we tackle the book, there are a couple remaining audience members. Do you have anything you'd like to discuss before we go into our regular agenda? All right. We could do Walnut Avenue. Walnut Avenue is letter J.
Andy.
Hi, Andy. And welcome, Jim. All right. So we actually conducted, actually, I'll let staff give the overall summary, but we did conduct interviews for the Walnut Avenue Master Plan with, if, just for everyone's recollection, there were five submissions and responses to the RFP proposals. We actually had potentially four interviews and one chose not to carry on with the interview. So we actually interviewed three firms and we have available to us a $25,000 matching grant. So we'll fork up 25. There'll be another 25 on the other end via grant. And I believe we came to, we had a really great set of interviews and I believe that the committee has suggested that we move forward with port and urban engineers for their proposal at the cost of $49,994 as their recommendation. I would say unanimous and there was a ranking system, I think, that some of the committee members used. I would say overall, everyone was very comfortable with port, felt comfortable with all of the qualified respond responders and really liked port. I would like to vouch that very, port had an interesting take. One, that they were actually, without prompt, very eager to take on this project. They seemed to have had an internal meeting that identified this as an RFP they wanted to take. Another consideration and thought here is that port and urban is actually a very large firm. And so there was a notation, I think, for all of us, like, why pick this project to apply for? And one of the things they stated that I think stuck out to us was that they look at this, they typically work in much more traditionally urban spaces. They look at the site and said, hey, that's actually a very urban space that could be really transformative for that neighborhood and community. And I thought that was interesting. Also to note that what would it look like for a firm to look at a space that traditionally would be considered suburban and apply their urban aesthetic and considerations into it? So I think those are all factors that folks discussed contributed. Any question?
We're gonna vote on that on Wednesday or?
Yep.
Right. Any other questions about the process or did I miss anything? Mike?
No, you mentioned that it's being partially funded by a grant that we got from T C N R. The other part of that is coming from ARPA funding. So there's really no cost to us. It's gonna serve as, you know, at the end of the deliverables, you're not gonna get construction plans to actually build this thing, but you're gonna get a master plan to follow for the eventual development of it. So it's the first step. It's an exciting step. And as you said, the firm seemed genuinely excited about, you know, I'll call it the challenge that the site presents. So it's probably a good selection.
Even though they were the designers of the, I see here, the Wisconsin Hickon Trail, which has yet to be completed.
Well, I think that that has more to do with the landowner at this point.
All right. If that's a no issue, then we will go to the book at this point. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's go to tab C, everybody. Thank you. All right. Mike, do you wanna kick this one off?
Sure. So this is your planning assistance contract with Montgomery County Planning Extension. We have a three-year contract with them that typically comes up for renewal. They have put forth a typical planning assistance contract. Provides for two planner days a month, 24 evening meetings each year. The total cost of the contract for over the three-year period is 93,456, of which the township is responsible for 50% of that cost, so 46,728. The, the cost in 2025 is gonna be $15,120 and is included in your preliminary budget that you'll talk about later this evening. In addition to the planner days that they provide during the daytime hours and the evening meeting attendance, which is typically at the planning commission level, they do Act 247 reviews, which is required by the municipality's planning code when a development comes before you, when an ordinance is proposed that they haven't created. They also do contingency services and technical assistance if you have a special project that you'd like them to take a look at. And they'll do structured assistance. And in this case, we have them teed up to do a comprehensive review of the zoning code. So that's all in accordance with what's been discussed in the past, the board. The only matter for you to consider is they do have an increase in the, the cost in the first year in, in the form of the planner day. The current rate is $721 a day and the proposed increase is to $840 a day, about a 16.8% increase. What they're doing there is they're trying to make a concerted effort to be more competitive in the, the the planning space. They, they, they take in a lot of bright young people, train them really well, and then they leave for the private sector because they can make more money. So they're trying to be more competitive and keep them on staff.
That was a county salary review, wasn't?
I think it probably affected positions all across the board, but just in Mark Penecal's time here as our liaison to the planning commission, I think he's seen like four different planners. And that includes senior staff who's been on, in on an interim basis, but nevertheless, it's four different people that.
Yeah, yeah. And as your planner representative with the planning commission, I would concur with, like I said. And I was just wondering if there's any way that you could put in the contract that you can get at least, you know, one senior planner showing up at our planning meetings. Because sometimes we, we get the junior, junior people showing up, but they're not as good.
How's the current plan?
Good.
Okay. So I think that, well, that's Mike Narcoich.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I thought, I thought we have Margo in there. I thought she's our new community planner.
Okay. Maybe she's being phased in, but he's not a senior planner is my point.
Right. And I think the senior planners come at a higher price point and we get them, you know, when we, when they're in between.
So this doesn't include the senior planner rates?
No, it includes the regular community planner.
Community planner.
And there's probably a mix in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I know that what, when the local community planner, say they write a report, they, they have that report circulated among their senior planners for review and comment before they publish it and put it out to the communities.
Okay.
So you do inadvertently get their expertise. You just may not see them as they get, you know, senior more and they get more years under their belt. They probably gravitate to not have quite as many night meetings.
Do towns have dedicated county planners, but you can't dedicate their time is what, what?
We have a dedicated planner.
Right.
But it, we've had some turnover.
And what, what, what tangible value did it bring?
The planning commission?
No, no, no. The county budget planner.
So, I mean, they're, they're a professional planner that, you know, they kind of give you the, their review on but I mean, land development subdivision.
They went to school.
Oh, yeah. They're absolutely, absolutely essential.
That's, I mean, totally.
Yeah, as a separate set of eyes and reviewing it, especially with regard to if you're changing the zoning or the.
And if you had that elite, top-tier planner, would it be much different than, say, the work lease planner that just got out of jail and?
Not necessarily, because I think they do a lot of things as a team. You know, they, they, each community planner has a senior planner assigned to them. You know, the, the senior planner may have three.
So you could have a robot that records it and then goes, brings it back to the other planners.
Well, they make suggestions, but the, the idea of the younger planner is they want that younger planner to learn the new style and to come to every meeting and see, well, this happened and this happened and this happened, maybe that shouldn't happen then. And the older, older person may know planning better, but maybe doesn't know Springfield as well.
I don't think we're missing out, right? Like when we did the trail plan, we had several senior planners come in and participate pretty heavily in that. So.
Yeah, I think turnover has been the big problem.
Yeah, I didn't.
And the lack of consistency is, you know, when you're passing, you know, just naturally passing things back and forth. Things just fall into the cracks.
There's consistency among the senior planning staff for sure. And, and they generally try and promote from within if, if you stick with them.
We have two questions from the solicitor here.
Do we always have two planning commission meetings a month?
Not always.
We don't.
Okay. Well, then we're paying for 24. If, if we don't have it, maybe we ought to pay per meeting or something like that. But I don't know if Mike wants to do that. And number, and number two, the Act 247 review is free. I mean, no one, no one gets charged that.
Well, developers pay.
Well, developers pay, yeah.
And then when we submit, but when we submit.
The Act 247 reviews, which is the, the written plan reviews that you see on all these developments, they're free.
Because the developers pay them.
Free to us, right?
Free to us.
Yeah.
That's, the developers pay for that and that's what the county planning commission is charged with doing, but they don't charge you for that. They charge the developers and that's incorporated or it's, it's addressed in the fee that the developers pay when they file the plans.
Except that when we submit a request for a, either a zoning or a planning, say subdivision or land development ordinance, they will review it for free for us. When there's, there could be a fee, but it's included, it's absorbed.
Okay.
I wonder if Jim, like, the, the two meetings per month is more of a retainer, so to speak, than it is on an actual attendance base, or if they view it that way?
Well, all I would say is, is that if you're having one meeting a month and you're, you're, they having, you know, in their minds figured two meetings a month, then they might owe you a little favor, that's all.
Right.
I don't, I, I don't think you're gonna see a senior planner. I mean, maybe Laura Murray gets a senior planner, but I.
Well, we've been getting a senior planner because they've been in between regular community planners. And as Margo has been on boarded, I think Mike has been attending periodically as well.
Yep.
All right. Seems like no issue to move forward with that.
Other than.
Other than raising the questions. All right. Township manager report. Go into E.
Okay. Try and. No, I'll try and be brief. So 2025 budget, you've got several pages of changes to the 2025 budget that were as a result of your budget workshop on the 16th. We got, at that meeting, we had updated medical insurance costs for the year 2025, as well as Pete had made a request that we appropriate some additional funding towards the Wisconsin Hickon Watershed Partnership. That's now been incorporated into the plan or into the budget. So if you would just insert them at the numbered pages and the exhibits in your budget book, you'll have a complete book. In addition, you're gonna make an announcement regarding the upcoming meetings for the budget through its adoption. And you're gonna make a budget presentation on Wednesday night, which is later in your agenda book as well. The awards dinner, again, just another reminder, Wednesday, December 18th, at the Flower Town Country Club. First responders appreciation night, that's gonna be held this month on the 25th at the Orland Volunteer Power Company. We have a Thanksgiving theme for the evening. I encourage everybody to come out for that.
What does that mean, Mike?
Yeah, what's that?
You have to wear a turkey costume. I mean, like.
Well, the food is gonna be a Thanksgiving theme. You can come dressed as whatever you want.
This is your chance for the beaver costume.
A pilgrim?
How about a, how about an Indian?
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna show up in a costume. This is my concern.
Rich Pike.
Rich Pike. Rich Pike is thankfully coming to an end, at least in our town. Section D is scheduled to be completed sometime. In fact, they have a ribbon cutting scheduled for November 20th. I, I heard today in the project meeting. They still think that'll be done. There's still gonna be a couple outstanding items, but by and large, the project will be wrapped up. As I mentioned in here, that, that has its roots in 2016. They started planning for that. They started construction in earnest in 2022. So mercifully, that's coming to an end. The EAC, we covered a lot of this already with the Moore Grant and their solar seminar that they wanna come up with or educational thing. So although we do, we lever that. TD Bank, Jonathan, I think you made the suggestion, we may be able to consider an RFP for banking services next year. And I think Commissioner Wilson correctly reminded us that there's a provision in our general obligation note that we have for the municipal campus that we refinanced in 2020 with TD Bank that we have to maintain them as our primary depository during the, the term of the loan. Otherwise, they can call it and we'd have to pay it off and get ourselves another loan. And the rate is at 1.55% right now. I don't think we can touch that anywhere, at least for the foreseeable future. So the, the other thing is, I mean, there's only one or two, maybe three different that I can think of, banks that have a government banking division. A lot of them have gotten out of the space and, you know.
I talked to a guy at Key Bank, Community Bank, and they work with Upper Dublin, Big White Marsh.
Yeah, I think that's one of them. I don't, White Marsh still has TD as their principal depository. Cause I remember talking to their finance guy, they did an RFP within the last couple of years and TD ended up being the most competitive. Not to say that Key didn't put in a proposal. Univest is another one that has done it. Citizens is eh, sort of in it. Santander has a very small division. But when we did our, just as an example, when we did our general obligation loan, a, a lot of them wanted to tie that in as a requirement and their, their loan rate was just way higher than where TD was. So, all right, we'll keep watching it. If it becomes advantageous, you know, certainly open to it. Flower Town Country Club, I did hear from Brian Halligan, he wanted to know if the board would consider entertaining an extension to the lease for that property. He brought it up for two reasons. One, you know, with there only being one year left on it, it's hard to book events beyond that one year. Probably all know, like weddings and milestone events get planned well in advance of that. The other thing is the banquet operators in particular are interested in making some additional upgrades to the facility. He didn't specify what they are, but if they're substantial enough, they would like to be able to get that return on investment back through some additional time. So I left it like this. I said, you know, tell us what you wanna do, what the value of those improvements might be. We'll make a determination as to whether they're worth that much or not and then tie it to whatever the, the term is that you think you need to get, you know, that money back. And you guys can make a decision then.
So awaiting more information with that topic. All right.
The Rec Center Master Plan. Susie's gonna have an announcement regarding the, the upcoming public meeting on November 20th. That is gonna take the format of a brief presentation from MKSD, our architects, on what they've done up to this point, how they were selected, what the needs assessment is telling the the, the planner that's been engaged for that. And then afterwards, we'll have like breakout stations where people can take the survey online by scanning it, you know, on a QR code, have a meet and greet with commissioners if you're, if you are there and wanna meet with people, hear what they have to say. Also like ideas, you know, like a magnet board, like prioritize what you think you'd like to see there. So looking forward to that, make that announcement. And then at our, one of our more recent project meetings, MKSD suggested we might wanna bring an estimator onboard to try and assign a cost to this project. And it's been suggested that, you know, you might wanna have a pretty accurate number to put out there because once that number's out there, that's the number that everyone's gonna like point to and remember. So we don't wanna just pick a, you know, obscenely high number to, you know, be conservative when the number really could be lower or that higher number could scare people off. So let's get a realistic number. So they're gonna solicit pricing from, say, like construction managers and people who are in that space and let us have, you know, you know, see if we wanna entertain that or not.
And that's distinct from the operational modeling that they actually will provide.
Yes, that's, that's separate, totally separate. This is on like, what's the, what's a building like this likely to cost?
Brick by brick, sure. Sure. I will say, I, I thought that the last meeting could have had better attendance. I know they thought it was good attendance. Of having gone to it on site, I found it a little curious that we didn't have more. So I don't know, just need to blast it out more once again with the, with email blast and put more signage up for the next meeting. I think, I know it's just in a few weeks, but just to invite as much participation as possible, I think that would be
Yep.
Great.
Can I ask another question? Mike, have you ever heard of a community outsourcing a rec center like this entirely to, say, like YMCA? So like, we would basically allow them to build a YMCA Springfield and run it?
I have not. And I know there's other operators other than YMCA, but I guess given the proximity to the Ambror one, I would suspect they wouldn't be interested in cannibalizing their, the people there. And I don't know that the site that we have is large enough to attract somebody like them. But it's an interesting concept to like have somebody else operate it, like even if we were to build it, you know, similar to the, the country club, somebody else could operate it rather than taking on staffing. But a lot of it comes to, like, the survey asked the question, if, if we build it, will you come? And how frequently? And would you be willing to pay to utilize it? And if so, would you be willing to pay on a per-use basis or, or would you prefer to pay on a per-use basis or on a monthly membership fee? So depending upon where, you know, those answers to those questions come out, you can sort of be, make those decisions down the road.
Have you heard of any such thing, John?
No, I was just thinking.
All the ones we toured were all municipally operated.
Keep an eye out. Maybe inquire.
The business hours. So one of our newer employees begged the question, i- i- is it possible that we adjust our work hours so that we would be open at 8:00 AM and conclude the workday at 4:30 PM as opposed to our current practice, which has been in place for years, where we open up at 8:30 and we close at 5:00? I asked the question of all the employees that would be affected and it kinda went from, eh, doesn't matter to me, to yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Nobody had any strong objections. I didn't wanna even propose it to the board if it was gonna create, you know, childcare issues for somebody or, you know, if they had something else that, that went on that prohibited them from, from being here. One advantage to it, and we've seen this as a result of our summer hours that we practice from Memorial Day to Labor Day, is contractors really appreciate it because they get their day started early in the morning. And oftentimes when we come in, well, not me, cause I'm in here earlier, but when people are coming in at 8:15ish or so for our 8:30 start, there's contractors like standing at the door waiting to get in, they'll apply for a permit or whatever. So an 8:00 start is probably not the worst thing in the world. So if you're okay with it, you know, we just kinda like implement that. There's no cost or anything. It's just changing the workday schedule. We'd certainly advertise it and get it out there. I'll talk to staff as to, you know, how soon.
Do we have any idea what our sister or brother communities around do for their?
Honestly, varies. A, a lot of them are out of here at 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon, but they also start at 8:30. You know, some of them start at 8, some of them start at 8:30, but by and large, most of them are, are closed at around 4:30. We're one of the few that are around until 5:00.
And I, I guess I would just wanna, I'd be also interested in just is there much community, did you hear from residents later in the afternoon on issues? Do they call in? Do they?
Very few walk-in people anymore at all, to be honest with you. Most of the, the walk-in traffic that we have is all code enforcement for businesses of, you know, contractors coming in, people applying for permits. There's, there's very little parking rec walk-in any longer. Most of that's done over the internet, online through the rec fest program. We have some folks who come in for the, the tax collector, mostly just to drop off penance.
But she sets her own hours.
She sets her own hours. I don't think the half hour would be significant adjustment at all there.
Yeah, I appreciate it being open sooner for the contractors and those who are utilizing the in-person services most, right?
And then the other comment was from the same individual who's worked mostly in the private sector was, you know, like, a lot of time businesses in the private sector give employees either like a full half day off the day before a holiday or in some instances, a full day off and that, that kinda like double the holidays. And I said, well, I'm not really sure we're prepared to go there.
They just started here?
Who is this new employee?
Well, within a year.
Yeah.
Well, this is all, you know, like employee satisfaction, work-life balance. We're hearing all these buzzwords nowadays. And, you know, again, the, the county's trying to remain competitive with the private sector. We have to try and be a little bit more competitive with the private sector and some of these. I know I have a sister-in-law who works for Toll Brothers and they get off every day before a holiday. Every day. It's like double the number of holidays they have every year. And I mean, they're also work remote and all those other things as well. So you know, open to considering certain things. So what I'm looking for, you know, the ask today is like, do I have authorization? Like if I tell the employees, look, we can work through lunch on the day before a holiday, maybe get out like two hours early just to try and like throw them something.
Yeah, I don't wanna make that call on my own.
No, I think that's.
I would think it's a good idea. Your discretion is the best, I think.
My, my only consideration is, is just not to impact the services that the residents receive on that township.
Sure.
Because again, 95% of residents don't get, you know, they don't pension, they don't get the benefits, they're all these, so a lot of the expenses that that we pay to be competitive, private sector, are not afforded to the residents. So I think it's just crucial that they, that, that their level of service expectations are still met.
Sure. No doubt, no doubt. I, I will say, you know, on the day before a holiday, it's generally pretty quiet. The phones are pretty quiet. Most people out, you know, that, that were serving have their plans for the weekend or for the holiday and they're not thinking about getting a recycling bucket or, you know, complaining about a parked vehicle, you know, like a van on their street or something like that at that, that particular time.
Yeah, I think you should have discretion for those half-days, of course.
But somebody would still be here to open the, to answer the phone still 4:30.
Not necessarily, because I, I mean, I certainly could stay. You know, and if people use the attenuated system, they can find me, you know, nine times out of 10.
I was just gonna say, I mean, if someone needed to access someone, in the rare case, someone comes in that's not going to the police department and coming here on New Year's Eve at noon or at 2:00 PM, could they call someone and reach someone?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, but I also think that if you publish our holiday hours that we're gonna close at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock before, you know, before the eve, people will adjust their behavior. Like I wouldn't expect a, you know, a reasonable person with a fast might be at their desk before they're gonna leave. I don't know, who would, uh, would stand at a Christmas party?
Scrooge McDuck.
For sure. You know, at your desk, at your desk until 4:30 before the eve, right? Like so.
I think to Jonathan's point, I, I trust you to be sure that service, service levels are high, your discretion used. I would even say.
Yeah, but somebody who's still answering the phones till the end of business, the business day, shouldn't they?
Could it be forwarded to one person's phone?
Yeah.
Or could be elsewhere?
Looking forward to it if they want to.
Cause I, I just, you know, I think your discretion makes sense maybe. And like talking about Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, like the date, or 4th of July, like around here, like everybody's in.
I'm only suggesting for that, what I would call the major holidays and Suzie and Brendan mentioned them. New Year's Eve, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day. I mean.
And I would, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna play devil's advocate. You know, I'm having. You know, I'm having thirty people over for Thanksgiving. I got a fucking, I got a van parked out in front of my house for all week and I was. You know, I want to have it moved because I want it parking or, oh man, our trash doesn't get picked up until the following Monday. I'm going to have turkey parkers just sitting there. You know, it's sometimes those things when you do want.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Fourth of July.
The sewer line is blocked in front of your house.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
You can't flush the jobs.
Yeah, yeah, come on over. But there's no bathroom, yeah.
But these, some of these things are a police matter or your, or utility matters, right? So. Um, I would say I would even take a step further and even say, I see notate, notated here, uh, staying until lunch and. Look, if a staff member can do their work for whatever, whatever the work is, administrative tasks from home and. I, I would even be comfortable being sure that you have the discretion out of this conversation to offer that, that flexibility to who, whosoever. Would meet those requirements so that they can still offer the services required and have the flexibility. Hey, I expect you to work until lunch. I'll check in with you at whatever time, you know, whatever your discretion is as manager.
I would take it even that. One really quick word of caution, that is check the police contract before you do anything. Cause whatever you give anybody else, the police will know about in point six seconds.
Oh yeah, especially since there's a couple of non-uniform that work.
And, you know, they will say, what's good for the goose, good for the game. Understandable.
Yeah.
And I think you mentioned some of that stuff, the flexibility of a more modern day to compete with, um, you know, private sector. You know, you should offer that discretion as, as you see fit.
But first responders should have. The, the police department. Somebody's got to be working for all of them.
As the chief always says, we're not making widgets here, you know, like we're, we don't have a snow day.
Do you have sufficient guidance here?
I do.
Anyone have any other concerns, questions, additions? All right, Mark?
Yeah, Mark's back, well, to work. He's doing well, um, lost some weight, looks good. Um, you know, he, he's going to be on a modified schedule, uh, for the first few weeks, but, um. He's going to be attending the planning commission meetings, zoning, there is not going to be a zoning meeting this month, but he's good.
All right, just quick reminder, or, uh, reminded me for the benefit of the other commissioners, I spoke with Mike. About it before that we had previously talked about this year, we haven't done an educational event that we've done it in past years and part of it. Uh, we talked about maybe doing some sort of business focused event to help those who are already doing business in the township or would like to start a business with the township. Uh, and Mark was going to kind of help fill in the gaps on the code enforcement side and. And particularly for development or what have you on that side of things and hopefully next year with his help and guidance. Uh, Craig and Mike have been working on that project, just to kind of piggyback also on that idea of a sustainability educational seminar. We're trying to develop these, uh, education pieces for the benefit of our community. Marcus, great contributor to, to that. All right, next, next topic.
The other two should probably be. Personnel and executive.
All right, great. Any questions on the bill listing? Hearing none, we'll go to the budget schedule. That's just announcing the rest of the schedule, right?
Yep. Two more meetings.
H is a summary of our taxes. Mike, anything new?
No, only what I just summarized in the manager's report, um, the expenses went up, um. Uh, slightly, um, but we covered that with, um, the opening cash balance, so, um, no difference than what you had. Um, seen at your workshop meeting, so, uh, we, we, there is an increase after three years of no tax increase. Um, we're proposing a twenty-three dollar and fifty cent increase to the typical taxpayer or the real estate tax and a five dollar and forty-eight cent. Increase to the annual refuse service fee. Um, so that the total amount, um, would be, um. That's twenty-eight dollars and some odd cents.
And folks can review this budget presentation online or of course come to our follow-up budget.
Yeah, the PowerPoint that you have, um, in this tab was on the, um, the published agenda, um, and the materials that were out there online. And we'll put it up there again.
Any questions on that?
I got one thing. I'm just going to open up my mic, but I, I would like to plant a flag for next year's budget. Um, for the consideration of. More traffic enforcement and if that looks like a. Permanent, uh, you know, uh, bringing, having, having a higher new traffic police officer. But I just, I, I do view the traffic as being the number one issue in the township. And I, I understand we, we don't have manpower to. Put somebody, you know, in charge of that on a, on a, on a sort of regular routine basis. Um, but, you know, all the things we talked about for a long time, given our proximity to three oh nine, we're kind of a cut-through township. Uh, I, you know, I, I do think that, um, while there's some advantages with the, the road diet of Bethan Pike. Um, it has pushed more cars down the side streets, uh, trying to get around that. And, you know, just again, all the development around our area just pushes more traffic through our township, but it, it, it is the biggest issue that I, I get. And I think that'd be a. It, it's something I really want to look at next year regardless, but, but I do think that we can kind of put that on the radar early on. Um, and that would be.
So, uh, right now, the traffic safety has been operating with Sergeant Hart and Officer Gross. Um, when we are up to our full complement of officers, we generally put another officer into traffic safety so that there's. Total three in there. Um, Officer Bujita, who we just hired, has completed his field training exercises. And I know they're, they're planning additional, um. Squad redeployments, uh, for January first. Um, now that he's up to speed and like completed his training, there may be an opportunity to put someone additional back into the traffic safety department. Um, so you, your request may be accommodated without any impact. Um, it's just a matter of.
And, and is there a way to crack, I mean, I know they, they can't do speed enforcement, uh, because they don't have the radars, um, but.
No, we do speed enforcement.
They can do it. It's just, we have to.
Difficult.
Yeah, they, they have to, it, so we have, um, two methods of doing it. One is, is basically, um. It's a stopwatch, for lack of a better term, between the two white lines that are painted on the street. Um, the, the other is, um, we have a. The heck is the name of that system? It, it's another calibrated system, but it takes two people to operate it. Um, so you need one person. At one end, one person at another end. Um, so they'll utilize that as well, um, that when they have a full complement of.
But I guess what I would like to, what I would really like to see is more enforcement, like more ticket. You know, and so if we can see ticketing getting increased, like say like the, the stop signs on haws. Uh, you know, all, all those different mill, um, every single one of those stop signs, a mill, haws. Sunnybrook, people just drift through them. And so I, I, I'm just thinking, you know, if we can get an officer that's permanent every day and just write hundreds.
So it's, it's. I think you'll hear from the law enforcement side that the, the vehicle stops are important, the actual. Writing of the actual ticket is, is less important. So. Many years ago, they adopted a policy of issuing the warnings, right? And the warnings are, are logged into the system, so if you're stopped. On a Tuesday and you're issued a warning for rolling through a stop sign and then on Thursday you're stopped again, how's your driving record? Uh, very clean. Well, it says here that you were issued a warning two days ago for rolling through, you know, a stop sign two streets over. Uh, you're going to get a ticket then, uh, but it's, it's more education, um, than it is penalizing. Folks, because they could be far more efficient in issuing the warnings than they can actually writing the entire ticket. Um, but you're not wrong, it's, it, the, the presence, you know, is the deterrent and the, and the physically stopping them.
May I make a piggyback suggestion off this topic? I had written on the notations on the police report that. Maybe it would be beneficial for the public to have a better understanding of the areas that are high. Uh, issues from a police perspective, right? And, I mean, I'm reading this, the report, I see the numbers, but. Just something a bit more executive summary that says, hey, this month we saw a lot of rolling stops in, uh, you know, on haws. Or this time we saw a lot of, in the summertime, drag racing on Stenton is the. I mean, some of those things we know about, but maybe there are things that we don't know about that the police could really lend insight on in their monthly report to us. And, um, you know, that we can have a better view long-term and it could contribute to this conversation and plant the seed for next year. That we're already talking about these matters and maybe able to pinpoint the recurring theme over the course of the next six to eight months. So, I, I mean, I don't want to suggest to them exactly how to do it, but just maybe something a little bit different. I was thinking about as an extension of the radar sign placement information that we receive every month, I, every month I look through and I say, oh. Two times in my, in my, um, neighborhood or two times in Winmore, for example. Um, and that's actually, you know, good insight for me so that when a neighbor comes to us and says, hey, when have you ever seen this? Well, I know they're, they're moving it. You may not, you may not perceive that it was there, but I know it is because I see it. Uh, it might be helpful for. Um, some better way to sup, to give us an executive summary of. A feel of the streets from the officer's perspective.
In your, in, in, in the police report, there's a statistical report that's at the back as well.
Sure.
That talks to you, that tells you about, you know, number of vehicle violations, you know, both this month and year to date. It talks about. Criminal arrests.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's just a more executive level, you know. Whatever the chief is feeling from the department, what he's hearing from his, you know, from the law enforcement officers about what's going on. And maybe it's the same thing every month, in which case maybe my point is moot, but if it is changing from month to month, it'd be nice to see that pattern. And we can rely on that pattern to have this conversation for next year.
I, I can say for certain that when I met with some of the neighbors in North Side, they would really, really appreciate you. For more enforcement, more tickets behind that, for people who are lucky to be along with you more, more.
And even just knowing.
Like I, I would love if, if Springfield was known as the, the township that tickets, you fill it off here, you know, they're just like. I'm, I'm, I say that somewhat facetiously, but I mean, I just, I don't think we can enforce, um, speeding and traffic concerns enough. Um, I mean, it, it, I don't want to say it's epidemic, but it's, it's, hey, it's just epidemic all around. But, you know, again, we've talked about it a lot. GPSs that people use, the people on their phones, people racing to get their locations. Um, I just think that it's so bad out there.
But again, maybe if we were to see that top line, hey, you know, we saw a high increase of enforcement at Traymore on February. We'll, we'll say June is probably more likely, right? In June, um, or April. Just, just to get an understanding of what the police officers are dealing with in their experiences. And how, how so ever chief wants to find that information and follow it to us, I just feel like going to read this. I mean, not to, not to discredit the vast information we have, I mean, it's really helpful. Um, but it'd be nice to kind of get a feel for what's going on out there, if you will, from their perspective, uh, in a more. Digestible, you know, couple sentences for, for our benefit.
I, I have a question for Jim. I know it's illegal in Pennsylvania for, for the radar guns, for the cops to use those. What's, what's the position for Pennsylvania on, uh, cameras? Track, crack, traffic violation, why putting a camera at the corner where the stop sign is? That records the guy rolling through and his license and setting him a, setting him a warning or a ticket. What's, what's the current thinking on that in Pennsylvania?
I think the thinking is that it works. I am, I am not sure that we're allowed, but I could check it and let you know immediately.
Cause I mean, I just came back from, uh, Louisiana where there are endless. Traffic cameras on every street, Maryland, you know, and, and they, they, I mean, they warn, they actually warn you. That, that, that there's a traffic thing coming, you know. And, but, you know, it, it, and it really seems like people obey the, obey the law.
So the, the, the autom, automated red light enforcement cameras are a thing. I don't know about stop signs though. Being, I don't think the Commonwealth has tackled that yet. And the A R L E is a different. Point system than a typical, like, officer issued ticket.
Okay.
So it's more severe with an officer giving it to you than the, the red light enforcement camera.
And, and by the way, all those enforcement cameras have radar. That's how they know the speed.
All right, so out of this, we're going to plant the seed for potential enforcement increase for next year's budget. Um, maybe explore ways to better report what's going on, uh, if, if some discretion to the chief.
State senators and asking them why they can't pass.
That's been done for seventy-five years.
That's, that's probably the most effective thing we can do as a board. We, we did it before when it was up for, you know.
There, there's some lobby and I, I'm not even sure who it is, but there's some lobby that's been fighting.
Yeah.
Local use of radar.
Drag racing lobby or something like that.
Yeah, I, I don't know who it is, but I mean, it's been since.
Put your tires.
You know, a long, long time.
Oh, I know, I know.
And then solicitor is going to check up on camera policies and, and other enforcement mechanisms, other enforcement mechanisms. How about just any other enforcement mechanisms that are legal?
I think you can use them for, for school buses and the, the red light enforcement cameras on, on traffic signals. But I don't know.
Check that out anyway, yeah.
I'll check it out.
Anything else on budget? All right. Next topic is our zoning hearing board meeting, which was actually been canceled on, for Monday, November eighteenth. Seven PM, though new petitions have been received. Uh, we have gone through, uh, the RFP. For the Walnut Avenue site. Uh, let's see here, we've talked about the Recreation Center Master Plan. Any questions on the recycling report? All right, next topic is Mike. This is. Us finally accepting the ordinance to change the term community activities. Does anyone have any concerns or questions about that?
Yeah, we're, you're providing a definition for community activities pursuant to the D E P's request.
Perfect.
Mike, just a quick question. Didn't we do that three or four months ago?
For the recycling ordinance here?
I mean, oh, you know what? It could be. It could be another township, it could be something that, you know, D E P got excited about and nailed every township in Pennsylvania.
Probably. It could be a new reviewer. I mean, as I mentioned, like after forty years, they finally like identified this as a problem.
Cause when I read that, I was like, we already did that, but might have done it somewhere.
Not us.
That'll be a motion to enact it.
All right, uh, we talked about the five hundred dollar investment to, for a potential fifty K, that's fine. Uh, next topic is, oh, relationship with Upper Dublin for. Trying to increase connectivity between us, Mike?
Yeah, so, um, there's a couple of Upper Dublin residents in particular that have. Um, been writing to their elected official in, um, Upper Dublin, uh, as well as the township manager in Upper Dublin and they've. In turn reached out also to, uh, Jim Lee, who's, um, Ward straddles this or, or backs up to Upper Dublin. Uh, over in Orland and to myself and, um, they're just trying to improve the pedestrian connectivity between the two, um. Communities and, um, there's some sidewalk gaps that we're aware of. We know that the, the ramps at the, uh, intersection corners, uh, need to be upgraded. They're probably not compliant at, at present. Not really sure why, uh, the state didn't upgrade them when they resurfaced, uh, the, the street. Usually they do that. We also know that our traffic signal at Bridge Street, uh, is, um, very outdated. It's the oldest one in our system. It does not have a pedestrian phase in it and it would benefit from having one. Um, but there's no sidewalks on the Upper Dublin side for people to cross to, so that's one of the reasons why it has never been upgraded. Um, but through this meeting we had recently with Upper Dublin's officials and, and it was a good turnout, everybody brought. Everybody, traffic safety officers, township managers, public works directors, parking recreation directors. Um, we were all there, um, we all talked, um, Upper Dublin invited their traffic engineer, uh, his name's Jack Smythe. Um, and, um, he was present as well and we talked about some of the issues that, that plague, um, Pennsylvania Avenue at present. Um, we, we looked at a Google map overview and we identified where we know there's missing gaps. Um, everybody kind of came to the agreement that the safest place for somebody to cross is going to be at that traffic signal, but that traffic signal needs to get upgraded. Um, there's some folks who would like to see us put mid-block crossings in, um, so that it would be more convenient to get to the train station. In, uh, Orland or at least on the, I guess that's the outbound side. But the traffic safety, um, officers and the traffic engineer both suggested that's not advisable. Because Pennsylvania Avenue, um, at thirty-five miles an hour, people are probably going forty to forty-five and they're not expecting people to, to stop for somebody in a crosswalk. Um, so it's going to actually bring, you know, it's going to be less safe. It's going to bring in more rear-end crashes. Um, so their thought was to, uh, upgrade the traffic signal at, at a minimum. Uh, we also talked about the trail crossing down at Orland Mill Road that was put in as a, uh, part of the Springfield Manor development. Um, that would benefit from, um, like a flashing. Um, that would benefit from, um, like, a flashing blinking light there or something that pedestrians could activate. Um, so, at the end of the day, the proposal is, um, the traffic engineer gave us a, a, a price proposal um, to evaluate all of this and put together, um, a grant application, um, maybe like either the Greenlight Go, um, a multimodal review, uh, to try and get some funding to put these improvements in. He thinks we have a strong case because it's multi-municipal, it's on a state road, um, these are actual improvements that could be put in and, and make a difference. So, um, i- if you're interested and you wanna continue to cooperate in this regard, um, the, the proposal that he put forth is ten thousand dollars. The thought was both municipalities would can, would split it, you know, fifty-fifty, um, probably a pretty good deal. We, we come out probably a little bit ahead, because we have the traffic signal that needs to get upgraded.
That's our signal.
That's our signal, yeah.
And Mike, is there an opportunity to, to connect, um, from the, the Chermonti Park over to the trails on the other side of tracks?
Chermonti to.
On Orland Mill?
On Orland Mill to where?
No, down further, so like, down Walnut, the park entrance?
So, it's Sandy Run?
Sandy Run, yeah.
Uh, he actually likes our plan to do that Phase Two there, to, to go from the park underneath, uh, to the Penn Manor development.
Yeah.
Um, but that's not included in this.
Wouldn't that be achieve the same sort of length between the two?
It would, yeah, yeah, in fact, um, they, they, he was happy to learn that we had put in a proposal to Monaco twenty forty for that. Uh, and the county likes that project, they just wanna see us develop that a little bit further with SEPTA, uh, because they ran into some issues with SEPTA trying to get underneath of a, um, a rail bridge. Um, but that trail's a little bit different. They anticipated in that trail, um, like a horseback trail, um, and they don't, they didn't know if they'd have enough clearance. Um, we think we have plenty of clearance, um, whether you have a horseback trail or not, uh, because it's such a big underpass where we are. So, um, yeah, the, I mean, so that's still on the table, John, uh, but that's not part of the scope.
Just because, again, that sort of idea of the dual municipalities giving it more weight and heft and.
Sure.
We kind of loop them into that.
Yep.
Maybe might push that along further.
Any issues, uh, moving forward with this, for anyone? All right, uh, just to piggyback on this, just thinking about the inter municipality and multimodal work. Do you have an update on the Cheltenham?
Yeah, they actually got eight proposals in from, um, planners. They, they put out an R F P to solicit, um, uh, the services of a traffic planner and engineer um, to, to do that multimodal review on Cheltenham Avenue. And they got eight responses back, and they have a review committee. Ian's gonna serve on the review committee for Springfield.
Who else was on the review committee?
Uh, Montgomery County Planning Commission, who's got the community planners from both municipalities on it. I think they may have a senior traffic planner on there, like, one of the Matts, Matt Admin or Matt, uh, what's the other Matt's name? Matt Admin Matt, or one of the Matts.
Does it have residents on this committee?
Not at this point, this is for the review of the trap of the, uh, engineer and planner. Once that person gets on board, then I anticipate there'll be community meetings, and there'll be, you know, a bigger group that, that sits on like a stakeholder committee of some sort. Uh, but this is just to review the technical proposals.
Yeah, and that's for those who might consider that there could be sidewalks on Cheltenham, theoretically.
There's a, a number of sidewalks, but there's also sidewalk gaps.
The whole way, sure. Uh, and then that reminds me, uh, White Marsh, any update on that conversation around that, uh, other area by John? Valley Green, right? That's where we were trying to work with White Marsh?
Attention, nah, we haven't gone any further with that.
We were trying to wait and see how the improvements that Pendott Road, but there hasn't been.
Hasn't been any rain.
Hasn't been any rain.
Sorry for the earth, it's been a beautiful fall, but I'm sorry to the earth. Well, that, uh, then brings us to Hill Chris Pond, which we've already discussed, and that would be the end of our formal meeting before we go into executive session.
I have one other thing.
I was gonna say, anything else before we do that?
Uh, Dan Helwig may have a tenant, um, it's a small retail operation, um, she's a retired nurse. Um, she's sort of gotten into the business of, uh, vintage, uh, jewelry, um, what else? She's been doing most of her stuff through flea markets and stuff, and then she got into online sales, and now she'd like to operate a part-time retail outlet, three or four mornings a week, which would be pretty complimentary to the business activities that go on at the balance of that facility, um, in the afternoons. As you know, we only have five dedicated parking spaces to the Black Horse Inn, which limits us somewhat to what we can actually put in there. I'd need to run it past the owner of the, the balance of the shopping center, make sure that they're okay with it. But it sounds like this is a pretty good use.
This is for the old bar area.
This is for the bar area.
What do you mean compliment to be, like, somebody's going to the liquor store and maybe get some vin and churri?
Well, the, yes and no. The, the timing of the, they get busy in the afternoons, this would be a morning op, principally a morning operation, so there wouldn't be a competition for parking spaces, which has always been the concern, uh, there.
So, parking is the main matter?
Just make sure they don't need special security.
Uh, okay. Okay.
You know, if they're gonna leave the stuff there overnight, does that create another?
The wares, right. Crystals, diamonds.
Probably the stuff that the historical society has in the, the room next to it is probably more valuable than some of this stuff, but.
Yeah, plus if they have a vault, does the, does the floor carry the load?
Yeah, good question.
Are there any other topics?
I doubt that it's that.
Any other topics anyone would like to bring up before we move into executive?
Yeah, I did wanna make a formal request, uh, to have some speed enforcement, uh, the, the signal moved to Lorraine and Orland Mill, like that intersection right there.
The radar sign?
What?
The radar sign?
Yeah.
See here, it has not been there for a while.
And, and if you, yeah.
On the rain or on Orland Mill?
Uh, I, on the rain. And can we also see if there's any sort of updated data on that intersection?
Like a study?
Yeah.
See what the, so.
When, when the last time it was done?
So, that, I guess the, you don't want it near the intersection, because people are slowing down at that point. You wanna have it mid-block.
Right.
So, do you want it in the three hundred block or the?
Well, I think ideally moved, um.
Where's the Compton reside?
I'm gonna figure it out right now.
You can get back to the.
Yeah, I'll get back to you. I, yeah, wanted to do that.
Anything else before we move into executive? All right, at this point, uh, public, or, I guess I have to open up for public comment again, I think. But barring none, uh, we are now going to be moving into executive session to discuss some personnel matters. Uh, and we will not be returning for anyone still remaining on Zoom. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you soon, see you Wednesday.